I'm getting started. So, thank you Mayor and Trustees for allowing me to present tonight. I understand that these were two items that we, that the trustees did not have an opportunity to speak about or talk about at the last meeting. So this was brought over to this meeting to start as a work session at 5:30 PM. It was announced publicly and it was also noticed. So, we are in good shape as far as that's concerned. So the first, so there's a, two items tonight that we'll talk about. One is the Board Discretionary Funds and the other is about Finance Committee. So, the first one is this Board Outreach and Discretionary Funds topic. So, you have, you have two, like, and the word lately now is tranches. So you have two tranches of fund. One is the Outreach Fund, which had you budgeted $107,500 and a discretionary fund of $61.5 in the 2022 budget. So, there's two ways to use, so each type of fund has different uses. So the Outreach Fund is used to promote activities and provide services that might not be provided due to lack of funding. The discretionary fund is generally used by the elected officials if they want to fund a special project or something like that. So, the Outreach Fund in 2022 has already committed $82,500 to the Main Streets program that was done a couple weeks ago through a memorandum of understanding. So, we've already paid out our first quarter, which was $20,625, which has already been paid. Last year, during the budget cycle, the Boys and Girls Club presented and made a request for funding in the amount of $25,000. That included $5,000, which had been designated to Eagles After Hours in the past. Boys and Girls Club has taken over that program. The discretionary fund is, again, the one that's used for town projects or that the trustees can use. It included funding for the fireworks this year, which is $41,083 for 2022, and there's a balance of $20,000 plus for the balance of the year. Oops, there we go. So, in talking to the trustees about these funds and how they're used and how they're distributed, it's not something that staff, this is your money. Both, both tranches of funds are your money. And, and staff doesn't have any control over that. So, I want, I want the trustees to have an ability to, or a process to work through to, for people to apply, make application for it, for the trustees to look at those applications and make, and decide how that money will be, how that money will be distributed. I did look at several, most municipalities that have these types of funds have an application process. So, went through and looked at several municipalities, and I kind of wrote down what some of those, the process of the eligibility requirements may be. Almost all of them require them to be a 501(c)(3) with the state and be, and with federal, be 501(c)(3) with the state and be in good standing with the Secretary of State's office. And that is something that staff can always check on. All that information is available online. It'd be an organization that demonstrates sound fiscal management. So that can be vetted through a variety of ways, whether that's submission of their financial reports, their, their budget, their, you know, there's a lot of different ways that can be, that can be attained. Meet at least one area, the Wellington Strategic Plan. Some municipalities require them to meet all areas of their strategic plan or meet at least 50%, things like that. So I just put down one for now, and in case you wanted to change that, but just, you know, something to discuss. All required organizations that support activities and programs in Wellington and programs that benefit citizen welfare and education in the region. One thing that I found of interest that several require that the organization addresses a unique community need. So, not something that's, that's normal, like, funding a, a baseball team. You know, that's, that's just, that's normal. That's something that happens every day. But a unique community need might be starting a food pantry that's specific for the community where, you know, it's, it's something new and, and not, I think we already have, you know, a food bank, but you know, it would be, be that one item. Organizations that, that serve a broad spectrum of the community, so not serving just one group of, of individuals, but something that would serve everyone in the community or give that opportunity for everyone to participate. Organizations that avoid overlapping services. Reporting on how the grant funds were utilized by a specific date, that is something that would be part of potentially the application process. Usually, that's done before each budget cycle. So, you, we would potentially start the application process for the 2023 budget. People would make application, you would, you would designate the funds, and then before they could apply again, they would have to fill out some sort of financial how, report form, how they use the funds, what was, what was the benefit to the community, you know, things like that. So, I, I found that really interesting, and I found that from what the municipalities I talked to truly vetted out those who were needing the funds, because that, having to provide that financial background at the end is, is some work. And I think I talked about that in that last bullet. The other thing is, some of the municipalities put a limit on the amount of funds that people can request. A couple municipalities said, you know, you can make a request of $5,000 or less, no more than that. Some made it, you know, depending on the type of organization, up to, you know, $25,000. That came from some of the larger municipalities that had a lot more funds to provide, but the municipalities around our size were limiting their request of $5,000 and $10,000. So, the Board Discretionary Fund can be made for small, should be made available for small projects. So, like, purchase, purchasing a piece of equipment for a park, like I said, funding a pilot program for a new activity or supporting an activity that would benefit the town. And those requests generally come from trustees. As you're out visiting with community members and different people, you know, you may hear of a need, and that would, you could bring that to staff. We would then forward the application to them, and they would fill it out and submit it, and you could make a decision at that time. And that can happen at any point in time during the year. I think that Board Discretionary Fund is one that, you know, isn't necessarily tied to your, to your budget timeline, like the Outreach Fund. But the discretionary fund, I think, needs to be a little more fluid for needs that you hear about in the community, because those could happen at any point in time in the, in the calendar year. So, what I'm looking for is some direction. Of course, no decisions will be made since it's a work session, but there was a request from the Boys and Girls Club. I have not provided them any information. I have not followed up in any way, shape, or form since the budget was approved. But I think that we need to close the loop on that. And if the Board of Trustees would like to fund them at the monetary amount that they requested, then we would bring that back probably as a memorandum of understanding, again, with the Boys and Girls Club, to fund them at that amount. Or if there was a lesser amount you would prefer, I would entertain discussion about that. And then, of course, I, I didn't want to put too much work into this until I talked to you all, but we can certainly, and I can certainly draft an application process and reporting structure for that Board Outreach Fund for the 2023 budget process. And the other thing I thought about today is like, well, actually, over the weekend, is you're thinking, you know, starting to prepare, you know, the amount that gets budgeted for the Board Discretionary Fund is just like this number. I don't know where the number comes from. Some municipalities budget a percentage of their sales tax, because then it, it, there's, there's something that they're relying on, where they came up with that amount and where that number came from. That seemed to be very popular among the municipalities. So, some do 5%, 10%, 2%, whatever, whatever that amount is. And that way, you know, staff will know, this is how much is in the discretionary fund. It's not just an arbitrary number, but a number that, that is tied back to something in the finances of the town. So, that should have been a third bullet, now that I think about it. So, would love to answer questions, or y'all can talk. Yes, sir?
Why didn't the Boys and Girls come out of the outreach? I mean, it's coming out of the discretionary.
Because, hold on. Maybe it should have been.
Seems appropriate.
And I think I have it in the Outreach Fund in the memo, and I do apologize. Yep, it's in the memo, in the Outreach Fund.
So, the discretionary fund is...
Yep, 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 yep. I apologize. Yes. So...
$1.5.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. So, so the unencumbered balance, unencumbered available balance in the Outreach Fund, after paying out all of, all of that you've committed to Main Streets is $25,000. And that would be the amount that Boys and Girls Club had requested. And, and I believe if, when I'm looking back at my notes, that was the intention. That's why we came up with that amount and for a recommendation to the trustees. If, if that was the direction you wanted to go, the funds would be there.
Yeah, that was my understanding too, that that was done intentionally for that value. So, for that exact reason.
Has anybody used the discretionary fund? I don't know if anybody's used it.
No.
I've never submitted anything. Have you ever submitted anything? I mean, I think it's got to get have it.
Yeah, I agreed. I just don't think that there's been parameters or guidelines.
I'd like to encourage next board to use, do something with it. Do some good with it.
Yeah, I think, but I think as Ms. Garcia suggested, I think some process needs to be established as opposed to you show up and knock on the door and we cut him a check. I think that only makes sense.
There could be a slew of reasons to request it. It could be all kinds of reasons, right? Doesn't have to just be a project.
No, I mean, for the, for the Board Discretionary Fund, correct. It could be, I mean, I, I've, I've heard requests from Girl Scout troops. I've had requests from, I was telling Mr. Sapienza that we had heard a request from a church wanting to purchase new hymnals once. There was, you know, and, and then it comes before the trustees. They make a decision based on if they, if they meet those requirements, whatever those requirements are. You know, the church hymnals did not get approved because it didn't meet option, items in the strategic plan that were identified. You know, they could meet some of, some of the other areas, but not the strategic plan piece. So, you know, and it did, only took care of one portion of the community, not the entire community. But we had a church in Windsor that had, it was called Stepping Stones, and they, they were 501(c)(3) that helped, helped families in need and helped pay for like their water bills and things like that. And, you know, the town funded them very graciously over the years.
How did, how did we pay for all the tables, chairs, for...
That was a grant.
For the patio areas when we were expanding outdoor seating and square footage?
Cares funding.
It was, okay, it was from Cares funding. Okay. I'm trying to figure out if that was something. I really like it aligning with the strategic plan. I think that helps to make this decision process less... It makes it a better guideline, because if, if we're, if we're creating a strategic plan from the perspective of the board, I like the idea that those kind of discretionary uses should align with their plan. So, I, I personally think that's great. So, that's something I'm really a fan of.
Excellent.
In this, in this plan.
I can add that.
And also consideration where we're building a strategic plan to maybe consider that.
I'm sorry, I agree, having a process is good, and we should have that. The, I guess this is a question that we as a board have to work through, is how stringent we're going to be on that, because part of it is, for example, you know, one of the, one of the things that was recommended is we could do something where they have to serve the entire community. Well, a perfect example would be something like the Senior Center. If they have a special thing that they want to do that would be additional funding outside of their normal funding, well, they only provide a service to a small segment, and I wouldn't want to say, well, no, you can't be in consideration, because you don't, and same thing if someone wanted to do something for childcare. Well, that only is a small portion. So, if we're going to have that, I think we need to be able to not be stringent, because we would cut ourselves off from a lot of potentially great things that might be tailored to a specific portion of the population.
So, in, in it, I, I have noted that it's organizations that serve a broad spectrum of the community. Would that be sufficient, or is that too, is that too limiting as well, or just that serve a, a portion of the community or serve the community of Wellington as a whole, or?
I mean, does that just come down to the board to decide how we, I mean, yeah, that is fairly open, but then that would then add the question of as well, is something that serves senior, is that considered a broad segment of the community? Because if it's not, does, and I guess that comes into, do we just automatically say, well, if they don't hit X percentage, then it's not even open for consideration, or is that something we as a board look at and say, hey, you know, hey, it's, you know, for me and my five people, okay, that's not a broad segment of the community. But if it's like, okay, hey, we've got a, they can show there's a larger reach than we can kind of work within that and say, hey, this might not be huge, but we think it's valid.
Sure. Well, I do have listed, and so I just put down a punch, bunch of bullets. One of the bullets was organizations that support activities and programs in Wellington. Would that be sufficient? As opposed to the broad spectrum?
I, I'm good with that, but again, I...
What if there's just like a hardship case that you, that the board would like to take an interest in? That's, I mean, isn't that something we should be allowed to do?
So, there are two different items. So that might come under your discretionary fund. So, we have the Outreach Fund. I'm highly recommending we have a process, that the application process and all of that.
Talking about the application process for the Outreach Fund or for the discretionary?
So, I think, I think we need to talk about two different ones. I do think we need to talk, because, because, because Outreach Fund would run on the budget cycle. The Outreach Fund would be people planning ahead would be, you know what, we've got this project coming up, we need some funding, we need some help, we need $5,000 to help finish it. And we're going to submit an application and come before the Board of Trustees and make our ask. So, that's, that's what I'm highly recommending for the Outreach Fund. The discretionary fund, that's up to you guys, how you want to handle that. That is totally your money. If you want to just hear, if you hear of a, hear of a need in the community, and you're like, you know what, let's talk to the trustees, come on in, let's, or you send an email out to the trustees, and I've got somebody interested, you know, they, they have, their daycare is, needs bottles, I don't know, you know, and you hear of this need, and that's something that the trustees are interested in, in supporting, then that's, that's your call. I mean, if you want to put some guardrails or boundaries on that as far as how much it is per ask, I, I'm not, it's up to you guys, but I think your discretionary fund needs to be just like left open for y'all.
Okay.
Um, my question for the discretionary fund is, is it a separate monetary amount? Is it a percentage of your sales tax or something like that, so that it's a defined amount each year that, that the board has available? Doesn't have to spend, but it is available for those community needs. I remember when I was in Windsor, the school got invited, the school marching band got invited to be in the marching band for one of the presidential inaugurations. So, the kids, the kids raised half the money, and then the town gave half the money for them to go, and that came out of the Board Discretionary Fund. So, that was huge, came up, nobody knew it was going to happen, you know, and had to move pretty quickly. So, that's your discretionary fund. I think we need to just, I would like to know a percentage or talk about what that might be, or I can come up with some options for you, and, and you can let me know how you feel.
Right now, it looks to be around 2% of the current sales tax. Yeah, so I'm wondering if that's a good baseline. I mean, to kind of keep it similar, I mean, it hasn't been used at this point, but the amount that's currently allocated is right around 2%. So, I think that might be a safe move to not increase it a ton, but to have it still be available. Another thought I had, I wanted to go back to, is regarding the outreach. In addition to aligning with the strategic plan, I think we should also open it up to whether or not it lines, aligns with the comprehensive plan. Since that is kind of the forward-moving direction or, you know, considerations of what likely will happen to Wellington. I think that's also items within that should probably qualify as well. There's a lot of things in there that relate to the culture of the town, the feel of the town. So, I think that might apply to a lot of those activities and this kind of community feeling type events that are, are listed in the comp plan.
And perhaps it's just a section of the application that says, you know, explain how, how this project or your need aligns with, you know, the town's comprehensive plan. They can put in two or three sentences and, you know, not having to pick out a specific piece of the comprehensive plan, but just overall. As far as the strategic plan, I think the ask of acknowledging which piece of the strategic plan they're meeting and, and meeting, how they're meeting that goal, I think that would be important. But I think just an overall couple sentence, requirement of a couple sentences on how this, how this works with the town's comprehensive plan, would that be, are y'all amenable to something like that?
I, I think I'm good with, as Trustee Kenny suggested, having some connection to that. I do want to make sure though, because as we get kind of more granular on things, which is what the strategic plan does, we might run into situations where, yes, it's somewhere tied loosely into the comprehensive plan, but it's really focused in, because right, things change from year to year, right? We passed a comprehensive plan this year. You know, three years from now, there may be a completely, if this last year didn't teach us anything, a completely unknown situation comes up, and all of a sudden we're saying, hey, this is not in our comprehensive plan, but this is something we need to address. I think it'd be good, because that would probably align more with the strategic plan. But I think having them point back to, hey, here's how this comes alongside, maybe some parts is good, but I don't know about making a requirement, but I do like the idea of the strategic plan, because that is short, focused in on where are we at right now, what are we dealing with?
Okay, understood. I, I can phrase that, you know, I like the connection with the comprehensive plan, you know, explain how, how this connects with the comprehensive plan, something like that.
Yeah, offhand, a couple of things that kind of would stand out is like improved trail systems, you know, some kind of additional benefit in that case, or meeting and gathering places was a theme that came up repeatedly throughout the comprehensive plan. You know, those type of things that bring community together, that sounds like outreach to me. So, I, I could think of a couple, just offhand. I was thinking of a couple of themes that might align with that, but wouldn't necessarily be written in our strategic plan, but, yeah.
I can, you know, I'll, I'll take all the feedback and create some draft documents to bring back, since it, we'll be talking about this for the 2023 budget process, but I wanted to get it. We'll, we'll start getting busier with the budget as the year goes on, so I wanted to get this taken care of before we got too busy with the other things.
107.5?
The 107.5 on Main Streets, or on Outreach?
Yeah, was that going to be every year, 107.5?
So, it'll be based on requests. So, talking about the 2023 budget cycle, and then we'll be taking requests. Yep, prior to budget. So, that way we'll know how much to budget. It won't be, it won't be just a guess, or it'll be, these will be applications that you all have approved and approved funding for, for... You know, give them a timeframe they have to do it, and then you all can make some decisions based on that.
I think that sounds great. Regarding the limits, all of our current projects that would fall under discretionary or outreach are well over the $5,000 or $10,000, everything that's...
It needs to be budgeted somewhere. If you would, if the trustees would like to have that as a separate line item and perhaps their own budget, we could do that for 2023 and keep it separate, you know, have whatever the amount is that they make the request for, we could certainly set up a separate line item for that. So...
I just don't look at Main Street as like an outreach program. I think it's almost something, you know, it's been a big tool for us as a town and a government, you know, it's...
Sure. I mean, this, this would be, this would be the perfect time to, to make those adjustments and changes if you want, if that was the direction of the board. You know, I'll certainly add it to my list, and we can, we can, for the 2023 budget process, we can bring that up, see if that's something you would like.
So, to clarify, pardon me, so, is this part of the Main Streets budget, or is it somehow administered by the Main Streets? I guess I...
This is part of the Main Streets budget.
Okay.
There shouldn't be in the outreach, outreach.
I think that's just where it has always been.
And it probably won't have to be $107,000 for outreach, whatever, I don't know. Next Budget Committee will fix that up.
That's right. We'll talk about that next.
So, I guess one of my concerns is we look at stuff, and I know there are a lot of great projects out there that want funding, and a lot of them are very expensive, but I know especially right now, we're already looking at budget. And our staff just did a great job of cutting over $2 million out of the budget to help with water and sewer. I think having a smaller limit would be better to say we're only going to be looking at things. I think 5,000 is a good number, because it doesn't tie us into just a couple of big projects. It allows us to look at multiple smaller projects, and I don't think it's a good thing for any organization to become reliant on us, the town government, right? Our, our job as the town government really isn't to fund organizations. It's providing safety, it's transportation, it's utilities, things like that. If there is projects or organizations who are doing things, the board says, hey, we'd like to help, then that's great. But if, you know, we're funding an entire, you know, $30,000 project, and people just get used to, oh, we'll just come to the town and they'll pay for it, you know, there's a lot of other things we could do with $30,000 in the budget. So I think I would like to see more of a limit. I think that 5,000 is a good number. It allows us to put something that we think is important and put that towards that. But I would say I think we should look at a smaller number versus just leaving that open.
So, I think the goal, from what I've, when I've talked to other municipalities, the goal for their outreach fund is not to completely fund an activity, but to be a supporter of an activity or a project, to not be the sole source. So, and I think that is why they have the limit of the 5,000 or the 10,000 or 7,500, whatever the trustees would like to see in that. If, if that is how you'd like to go, pulling Main Streets out changes the dynamic quite a bit for that fund, so that you can put some of those boundaries or guardrails on requests. So, you kind of, you kind of like the 5, 7,500?
Maybe. You got a whole nother board, whole nother committee coming up. They might like something different. Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, I, well, we'll start. So, I can create some, some drafts and present them at another meeting here coming up pretty shortly. And, and you can make some decisions about that, what that amount looks like, because I want to make sure the board approves of the application process, how it looks, the questions that are being asked, and then if we need to make administrative changes over the years, we can do that. But I think the initial, the initial form and policy needs to be vetted by the trustees and approved. So, I can work on that and come with, come to you with, I'll come with 5,000, and if you want to change it to something else, we can during that process. Sound good? All right, we can do that. Any other questions on that one?
Um, I don't think, I want to get to the Finance Committee, so I don't think today is the time. I would like to, I, with Main Streets, I know we approved that with the Boys and Girls Club. There was never really any discussion. There was a presentation to the board.
Right.
And then it was added to the budget, but this board never actually discussed why we should or shouldn't approve that funding for that. I know it was put in the budget, and it was there for that reason, but we as a board never discussed any of that. We had a presentation, but there was never any discussion on that. So I would just ask if maybe another meeting, perhaps we can have that discussion?
Well, no, I, I would disagree. I think that that discussion was the root of the discussion about the discretionary fund. So I think that this is a work session still, right, and that those are, technically, those funds would come out of the discretionary fund. So, if the board is open to it, would you guys like to have a discussion about the Boys and Girls Club? For it to come back for action or no action, or?
We did discuss it, I think, in detail during the budget retreat, and I think that's why it was approved at those values. That's why, that's why I mentioned earlier that there was an intention and discussion around those two items that happened to equal the exact total that's in the budget. So, I, I remember a thorough discussion regarding the Boys and Girls Club during that time. So, I, I under, that we can definitely talk about it again, but I, I would disagree that we've never talked about it, because that did happen during the budget retreat.
I know we talked about the budget retreat, and I'm, I'm personally okay going forward with it and moving on. And then, and then the next budget round coming up, a lot of these things are going to be tackled a little differently, I suspect.
So, similar to the Main Streets, I would prefer that we do a memorandum of understanding with Boys and Girls Club, so that there's a paper trail of the discussion and, and the process and the funds. of the discussion and and the process and the funds that are being requested. Are we all comfortable with that? Okay.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, fabulous. I will take that. We will add that to the agenda. You're coming up. All right. So this next one, okay, escape. Okay. Anyway, roll on to the finance committee. So we'll go through this presentation. I know I put in some draft dates as I, I was not in a great place when I created this packet. So I apologize as I thought about it. So I have a couple of other ideas. So we'll go through this and talk about it a little bit and then I'll tell you, give you another option that I thought of. So the role of finance committee, my, my research has found that there's generally two types of finance committees. Either it's policy, just completely policy driven, looking at financial policies, purchasing policies, fleet policies, things like that. Or general budget oversight. They generally don't mix together because I think there's so much work to be done on either side. So it sounded like we were looking more at the budget oversight piece of looking at our bills. You know, what's being paid out? Is it correlating to what the the town board appropriated or approved of in the budget? So that's kind of how I've looked at the committee goals. So again, these are just some options, bullets that I found, looking at other municipalities that have finance committees. And quite a few municipalities do. I was really surprised at how many did and that we did not. So I think we're really on the right track in in creating this committee. So this would be reviewing annual draft budget, budgeting priorities, things like that. Review the need for the rotation of the town's auditors. So I found that in almost all of the finance committees is is being part of that process. Participating in the interview process for those firms, reviewing the town's draft annual audit and providing recommendations. So that would be, I didn't see that in all of them. That was just in a couple of them. I think that the app, the town auditors like to come before the trustees and present their audit. So I don't know if that's one that you really want to have, but wanted to throw it in there as an option. Reviewing of the revenues, so monthly or quarterly, reviewing of budget versus actual expenses, monthly or quarterly review of reports generated by outside consultants, such as your utility rate studies, you know, different things that that pertain to our finances. So the creation, so I'm moving kind of fast because I don't want to run out. I want to give you guys time to talk. So the creation of the finance committee would have to go into our code. All of our advisory boards and commissions are in our code. Adopt, so it would be adopted by ordinance. Currently I have this tentatively scheduled for March 8th, which is a really compressed timeframe. Finance committees. So in talking to Vic, she has put together, she is, she is the, she's the mastermind. I have not participated in a finance committee before, so really relying on her and her, her expertise in in the creation of this and setting this committee up for success. So she came up with five different weeks of of topics to discuss, five weeks of onboarding and then monthly as needed or quarterly. Keeping those meetings to no more than two hours in length. So I have these proposed dates, which are again, very compressed, based on on availability of the leaper, availability of trustees, working around the various candidate forums that are scheduled, all the different things that are happening. So these are kind of like the draft dates I initially came up with. So these are the onboarding topics. Meeting one would be, you, you can read all this because I do want you guys to have an opportunity to talk. One of the things that we have added that we have not debruised. That is a term, a financial term that Vic wants to talk to whoever the finance committee is about what are options with debruising. It does give us more flexibility with our money. So that's something that we would like to present to this particular committee to to potentially recommend to the Board of Trustees and talking about the creation of bylaws. Color of Money presentation, that's something that Vic would present, just explaining especially to the new members, those who are not trustees about what what the general fund is, what our revenue funds are, enterprise funds, things like that. Meeting two, review of the general fund, all the monies. Meeting three, review of some of our other, review of street parks, et cetera. Meeting four, water and sewer drainage. Meeting five would be discuss policies. So before I go into this, one of the reasons I was compressing this to happen so quickly is Vic will be going on vacation, leaving May 1st, gone for six weeks. And in my mind, I was thinking, oh, my goodness, we need to get this done now. We need to get it done before she leaves. Well, in all actuality, if we waited till she came back, it would still be part of the budget. They would still be part of the budget process. Would give us opportunity for the new board to get in and be seated, be in there for a month, six weeks or so. We'd have our new finance director on onboard. We hope to have someone in place, interviewed and in place by mid-May. So that would give them a little bit of time to get onboard as well. I was looking at a potential first meeting, all on Wednesdays, on June 29th. And then July 6th, July 20th, July 27th and August 3rd. So, and I can send that information out to you all. But I felt that in thinking about this over the weekend, that pushing it and trying to get it done quick, I'm afraid we will miss something that there will be rushed and we won't be setting this committee up for success. And that's my goal is to make sure that we are getting the right people on the committee, you know, with, from Board of Trustees to residents. And making sure that our finance director understands where we're at. I mean, to get this all set up and then have the finance, you know, director show up just as we've thrown it all together. I don't think we'd be serving them very well and being able to be a very good support, support for the committee. So that's, before I got too far, I wanted to throw that out to y'all and don't know if you want to talk about that first, or if you want to talk about the different bullets about, about the finance committee itself.
Work session, no forum.
So those are some good points and I appreciate those are good thoughts. The one thing that I would prefer is consistency. I know we are pushing hard to get the land use code passed right now because the existing board and the planning commission have worked on that. And so I'd like to see some consistency. If we're pushing super hard to get to the code of the town passed. One of the things that the board had said was, we're going to lean on this finance committee to really look at budget and really seeing what can we do? How can we help with rates? So I really don't think this is a good spot for us to say, well, actually, we're not going to push to get this done. We'll wait for the new board. If we're going to be consistent and we're going to say, okay, we're going to wait on all these things for the new board, that's one thing. But when we're saying in one area, we're going to push to just get things done. If it's messy, so be it. But in this other area, we're saying, hey, we're, and to me, this one's hard because this one actually is, you know, hopefully we'll be able to go and look at things and help residents on the water bills. Because that's the board's idea was this, this committee can help look at things and see, are there places we could, you know, clean up the budget a little bit or maybe we can't. But so that I do have a concern with, it makes sense, but I would like to see consistency one way or the other. If we're, if we're pushing certain things to get through, we should be pushing all of the things to get through, not picking some things that we're going to have a priority to get with this board done. And other things we're just going to leave to the new board. That's kind of my thoughts on that.
Well, I would like to comment about that and it does make some sense, but you have to understand this is new. And the land use code has been going on for how many months?
Three years.
Yeah, okay. So I mean, there's a lot of work that has been done by this particular board, whereas this is a new, new entity. So my opinion is I I would not, I would, I would have to respectfully disagree with trustee Gator. I think, and with the whole thing of getting a new finance director in, I think doing that concurrently seems to make a lot of sense. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on. I mean, we've all seen the agenda, tentative agenda between now and the switch over to the new board. It's just packed full of fun stuff, so. I, I, my, my opinion is I would, I would not try to do the truncated schedule and do this, try to get it accomplished prior to our interim treasurer going away.
I was thinking of people who might want to be on this board who have expressed interests and people I would recommend to be on it. The concern is if those people end up being on the board, they would no longer, based on kind of the recommendation that only residents or members, nobody from the board. They would have to be, they would be removed from that committee. In which case their replacements might have to completely start over with their five meeting onboarding. I think it might do an injustice to that committee by having partial established members and then other people who are catching up. I think what we've seen from the sewer resident round table is that it was a significant process for their onboarding process. You know, how many hours did they spend learning the ins and outs and all the details? It took a lot of staff time too, because in addition to them learning, staff had to prepare and then provide all those presentations. So if we're doing that twice, I think it might be an injustice to that group. When might we hope to have the water study going and completed?
The plan is to have it completed this fall, before, yep, before budget or in conjunction with budget. RF, I believe we're RFQs are out? Almost, okay, awesome. So the plan is to have, have that on an agenda as far as the contract approval for the Board of Trustees here at the next meeting. And then, and then results. So the timeline will be included in that information, but the goal of staff was to get it done August.
That, to me, the feedback from that is such an essential component to this group because that'll be vital information for them. That'll be included for sewer and water and storm and everything water related. So if they came to some conclusions, you know, before May and then received a study with brand new information that fall, that would also be part of that budget process. I think that also is a concern. So I mean, I don't think it would be bad if they started right now. I just think that there's going to be a lot of transition process and they're not going to have all the information they need at that time regarding a couple of topics. So, but anybody who's willing to do that volunteering, oh, my gosh, thank you so much. It's such a huge responsibility. And I appreciate your service so much to community. So I would just prefer, I think that everybody had all the information they needed at that time, so.
Yes.
Okay, um, I've got a couple of comments here. I agree with trustee Kenny. I had some of those same concerns regarding starting and stopping for both the, the finance director and for committee members that have been consistently involved with some of our other roundtable groups. That would be a disservice, I think, if we, we start the process and then that's disrupted because we're either onboarding a new finance director who has to get caught up and, you know, insert their flavor into the process or vice versa, you know, with new members. But I also agree with trustee Gator's comment regarding consistency. One thing I don't like hearing ever is pushing something through. I don't think that we should ever be pushing something through. I think that really the intent is, this board wants to see the project that it started a few years ago come to completion. It's not necessarily trying to push it through, they're just trying to complete it before they exit. Anytime you try and push anything through, I think in local government doesn't push, doesn't paint a very good picture. So taking our time and being thoughtful about the process, I think is more important. And along the same lines of consistency, I saw in the packet that the, there are a couple of options too about how we're considering doing the roundtable member process in the future. Is it going to be an application process like we've done with? Or is it going to be appointment as we've been doing? So I agree on both the consistency point for the same and different reasons and also with trustee Kenny for the start and stop.
Thank you. Wise words.
Yes, sir. You're good. Yes, sir. I get what you're saying. I personally think we got a lot on our table. I'd like to get that completed. I've been working on it for a long time. It just, it just didn't show up.
The land use code, you mean?
All four of them. The, the, well, three now, we're down to three. Okay, I'd like to get them all done. Contracts done, signed, ongoing, get that start. And then after that, next group figures out how to make it all better. But we got to get, we got to get this completed and going. So, so, but if it did get kicked off too, fine. You know, I'm not like, it's not going to really break me there. You know, you know, I don't think you want to do it twice, onboard twice, you know, but hey, you might have to. I don't know, you know, that way.
Could we maybe do like a, like a literacy session? More of like a town hall where everybody is invited to learn more about
Absolutely.
finance from the town perspective.
Absolutely.
I think that would be a good way to like recruit people who would want to apply. And then the general understanding, I mean, the in-depth that you go to when you're in resident round table, man, that's, that's deep. So maybe it would be cool to just do more general knowledge and opportunities and then see who's really interested. And then we were looking over this, Tim mentioned, the members could be made of trustees. And just based on feedback I've received, I think that's not the intention that I've seen from resident roundtables. That really should just be recommendations so that a trustee, just by the fact of their title, isn't influencing it in any way. Or, you know, maybe, obviously not intentional, but just by their presence, I think sometimes that happens or they're looked, they look at them for guidance. Somebody brought, I think Dan brought up that once before regarding our other boards and commissions. So I would, if, if we're going to be consistent on boards and commissions, I think maybe that should be something that should carry over there as well. Yeah.
I did just add that there were several municipalities, in fact, most of them had a trustee or council member or somebody on it. So, but, you know, and with us removing trustees from planning commission and board of adjustments, that would stay in theme with, with the direction that you've already given, but wanted to, again, these are options and wanted to make sure I, I threw out as many options as I could for you to pick from.
I appreciate that.
Well, I'd like to say I'm supportive of trustee Kenny's approach about not having the trustees on there for her reasoning. And I mean, it's the same thing for the wastewater rate round table as well. The trustees did not participate, witness, watch any part of that process. We were completely removed from it. And I, I, my question to you were, how is it working? It, oh, it's working really well. That's all I wanted to know. I didn't want to get involved. I Yeah, no, because it's, yeah, and, and, and certainly I want to thank all the people who did that and I appreciate their time. Although I will say that, again, I'm very grateful you took the time, but just put it in perspective, some of us have spent hundreds of hours looking at some of these things. So it's not like this is some sort of one-off too. And we've been talking about some of these subjects for years and I'd like to see some of these put to bed too.
I think the intent of some of these things is to, is to get a second set team's eyes on it other than the trustees, right?
Okay, and, and staff, to be quite honest. So, yep, I think, I think it's great. I like it.
Yeah, I think that's where the magic happens is just out of the box ideas that were just creative thinking that probably isn't our first nature thoughts up here based on our experience. So I, I think, I think residence would be fantastic.
Okay, um, yes.
I am definitely a fan of residence. So I think the more we get the community involved, that's great. I was going to say we should have less trustees and more residents, but we go all residents. I am game with that. And so it sounds like we have a direction from the board. I just do want to say where my concern is, is just, again, we, we kind of pushed back in saying, we're going to, we're going to get the finance committee going to see if we can help with things. And now we're pushing that off again. It's, it's, it bothers me because it's, we're, it looks like we're creating a pattern of we're pushing, we're pushing, we're pushing on things that could potentially really help people. That's the only concern I have with it. But if the board's direction is we want to wait on that, then that's where we go.
Could we consider more people on it too?
Sure, then that was going to be my question. How many, we're thinking five, seven, nine, I mean, we can do whatever.
How many were on the, uh, the previous round table? Was it five?
Yeah, it started, yeah, it started out with 13 and then people dropped. And then we ended up with seven and then we dropped down to five at the very end.
Well, maybe let's try seven, because that, they start, they started out with 13 and so they got down to five. Seven's kind of in the middle and based on all of the communication we've done and great feedback, I hear it's spreading like wildfire. I think that trustee Kenny's right that if we do an open house, that there'll be a lot of interest in people wanting to participate in this, so.
Yeah.
So just one thought on that. So I think that when we talk about seven, does that include the town administrator?
No, that's completely separate.
Seven is good and especially if we're going to wait for the new board, I think what we should do is kind of like we did with the water round tables, each trustee and the mayor they got to basically nominate and appoint one person and seven is one person from each board member. And if we're already waiting for the election to happen. And seven is one person from each board member. And if we're already waiting for the election to happen, to really get this kicked off, that's perfect because we'll have the new trustees in place and then each of them will get to basically appoint someone to that. And then the new mayor will be able to point one person. So.
I don't know. I've split on that 50/50 because that's inconsistent with how we approach the other boards and commissions. As we've gathered more and more interest in those and it's kind of been competitive, I think that that gives people a more equitable opportunity to try and participate, I guess, instead of be, having to be buddies or friends with one of the trustees to get appointed onto the board. I think it just provides a more fair process.
So how do you suggest the process? Because currently our process is we have two trustees and staff interview all candidates and then assign them. Are we just going to have all of them interviewed by the entire board?
Sure. We could do it in a work session.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just like, like if we're going to do something like that, I think it'd be something that we as a whole board can all give input on. So if we're going to do that.
I think that's a good compromise because then the, each of the board members has an opportunity to have input on who's being appointed or which applications being selected. And then the community at large can participate without having fear of having to have an in.
It'll be an open process. So, you know, things like that.
And open medians too. So I guess anybody who's interested in learning more can also attend.
So maybe I've missed this. So there were two possible roles for the finance committee. One was policy or general budget oversight. Have, did I miss, did we make a decision on that or did I miss it?
No, you didn't miss anything.
You didn't miss anything yet. So I, I crafted it based on budget, but y'all talk about it.
I think that that was the, like, that's the general vibe I've been getting from the, the community, that that's where they want to have the most engagement.
Yeah, yes.
Absolutely. I don't hear people concerned necessarily. There are some concerns about some policy things, but most of it is more about where's the money going? Where is it coming in? So I think absolutely the budget would be the one to go with.
Application requirements, do they need to be residents, part of the GMA?
Residents, I would say, because we're talking about taxpayer dollars, which are only paid by people within the sound limits.
Yep, I would agree with that as well.
Same, same qualifications as serving on the planning commission.
How long should terms be? Three years, two years? Two?
Maybe two years because then it lines up with elections and then each new board, if they felt the need to, could appoint a new finance committee.
They could.
Would we stack, would those be staggered in some manner then?
You know, to do it with a group of that size might be a little difficult, but it's only, with it only being two years, you know, if it was a four-year term, we, we could do, you know, a few at one year, a couple at two years, a couple at three years, a couple at four years. But with it just being, we'd just be splitting it. So I don't know if that would be, I don't know how useful that would be.
And I don't know that we would need, like with a lot of other things, right, like parks and planning commission, you're working on things that are are potentially going longer periods of time. But if we're talking about this finance committee, they're really be some
Similar to planning commission. I think it should be.
The other it's look like coming up for the July, August, September, October.